October 9th, 2018, meeting of the City Council of the City of Fredericksburg. We will be led in opening prayer by Counselor Charlie Frye, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand if you are able.
Heavenly Father, we seek blessings on the task before us. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations, and with wisdom. Our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the nine states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have a very special presentation this evening. It is our annual Wall of Honor ceremony, and we are honoring two really wonderful citizens of Fredericksburg this evening. I will call upon Nancy Moore, the Chair of the Memorials Advisory Commission.
Since the year 2000, the Memorials Advisory Commission has been seeking nominations for the city's Wall of Honor, which is right back there. It recognizes people who've made a significant contribution to the welfare of the city and to the betterment of society. This year's nominees certainly fill that bill. Lemuel Houston and Ann Rowe. That brings the total on the wall to 70. Houston's father, Levin James Houston, was part of the first group added to the Wall of Honor, and you can see his name up there. I'm going to speak about Lem, whom I knew when I worked at the Freelance Star, and he was the postmaster. And then Jervis Hairston will talk about Ann Rowe. Lem, as he was known, was born in Baltimore in 1909. He moved to Fredericksburg 10 years later, when his father, Levin Houston, became city manager. His first reaction to the town was disappointment because there was a big fire downtown, and his mother wouldn't let him go see it. He graduated from Fredericksburg High School in 1925. In his entry in the Rappahannock Yearbook, it was then Fredericksburg High School, said, "Behold, our class president, a good combination of brains, willingness, and school spirit." That pretty much sums up a man who became a newspaper man, a Marine, a postmaster, and community historian. In his delightful oral history interview in 1997, Lem recalls how he got the job at the Freelance Star. Well, Kate Aldridge, who ran the women's page, got married and was leaving. He was hired to do pretty much everything at $15 a week. As one of two writers at the paper, he did cover just about everything. And besides being a reporter, he was also a marriage commissioner, justice of the peace, judge of the Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court in his spare time. Lem had attended VMI, and when World War II broke out, he joined the Marine Corps. He saw action in the invasions of Saipan and Iwo Jima, along with the occupation of Japan. He was also called up during the Korean War and retired from the Marine Corps Reserve as a Colonel. After the war, he worked helping veterans and war widows get benefits. But then, he said, "The postmaster conveniently died, and I applied for the job." He kept that job for 26 years, retiring in 1972. Never one to sit still, he then became Marketing Director for the National Bank of Fredericksburg, and even wrote a book about it called "A Bank for Fredericksburg." He belonged to many church and civic organizations, usually in a leadership position. He also served on the Memorials Advisory Commission. It was Lem who came up with the name "Blue and Gray Parkway." In fact, he was known for his naming skills. He remembers suggesting the Yellow Jackets nickname for the James Monroe High School sports teams. He even helped his father name city streets, choosing the names of former mayors for some of the streets in College Heights. Payne, Parcell, Rowe. Throughout his life, he was a historian and community booster. He was one of the city's first tour guides. He said the Princess Anne Hotel would call him up when visitors wanted a tour. He did it for $3 to get a little extra money. And he always promoted Fredericksburg as the best place in the world to live. After Lem Houston died in 1998, the Freelance Star called him "a man of great community spirit who left his mark on Fredericksburg in many ways." And now I'll call on Jervis Hairston.
Ann Martin Wilson Rowe. Quiet and reserved and encephalous. Ann's strength of character was well nourished in her intellect and in her compassion and respect for others. I knew all of this firsthand, as did many others like me who served with her on boards and commissions around town. During meetings, Ann would constantly be knitting, as others would be bantering and scurrying about less patiently. But seldom, if ever, did Ann miss a point of the discussion. She brought calmness and serenity and a sense of caring to the subject. She made topics matter more than they would otherwise. She seemed to always cut to the chase, get to the real, but without hurry or haste. She would listen, understand, speak softly, but decisively, and everyone would hear her. Ann enjoyed talking to me. I loved talking with Ann. The subjects were varied and ranging, outward-looking, forward-looking, but it was never about her. Not once, never, did she fail to lift me up. She sensed I needed that in my early days here, and she was right. It was as though she understood what moved me, and she didn't really want to waste time talking about things that didn't really matter as much. I often think of Ann and remember her with a warm smile and with everlasting admiration, though our paths really crossed briefly here. More than anything else, Ann loved this town, and her service on countless community boards and commissions throughout the course of her life undoubtedly made this town a much better place to live. There's no question about that. Among community supporters and volunteers, Ann truly was nothing short of legendary. Yet she would have nothing like this, or anything or any part of such self-recognition. She was pleased just to make the town a better place to live for others, so they too would come to love it as she did. Ann's memory, and more importantly, her service and compassion to those who needed it most, should live here in Fredericksburg on this Wall of Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Jervis. So true. Both of these individuals are well-known to me, and actually Lem is the grandfather of my sons. I would be remiss not to welcome both families, the Rowe family and the Houston family, here this evening, and to welcome former Mayor Joe Rowe, who is watching, I understand, at home, the husband of Ann. Will we proceed to the back for the unveiling? I'll join you, and the families can join us at the back by the wall.
Michael Spencer, going to unveil the latest plans.
Feel free to come around and to take pictures as we proceed. Who the matriarch is here. Every family has one. Exactly. All right. If families would like to take pictures, Bootsy, where are you? Come on over here. Get all the Houston's we can muster. Bootsy's Bootsy Howard, and you guys will remember Key Howard. That was Mary Houston, Lem's sister's son. I get my -- I'm getting old. I get my generations mixed up. Thank you. Thank you so much. And good night, Joe. You can take a nap now. Officer Morris, we thank you for being with us this evening. We now have another very happy occasion. We would like to present the proceeds of the Sixth Annual United Way Benefit Golf Tournament to the Rappahannock United Way. I'll call on Doug Fawcett, our city manager, and tell you a little bit about this. We held a tournament every year to benefit the United Way. It was held on June 11th this year. The number of golfers was 128. I'll go ahead. Come on up, Doug, and come on up. Representatives of the United Way. Join you in just a minute. 128 golfers, so each year we've had more golfers participate than the previous year. We have a committee, and would you all stand up? Who's here? Eddie Allen, Bob Bell, Human Resources, Donna Crump of the City Manager's Office, Grace Draper, Grace is here, and Doug Fawcett, Chief Cheerleader. Ann Lloyd Jones is in here. There you are. Yes. Brenda Martin of the City Manager's Office, Brenda's not here now, and Teresa Payne of the Fire Department. That's the committee that puts this all together. And through the support of the sponsors and the golfers and all those who donated prizes, we are pleased to present $12,835.93 to the Rappahannock United Way. This represents, it increases to $77,175, the total tournament proceeds we've given for the last six years to the Rappahannock United Way. Mark your calendars now. Next, June 10th, 2019, will be the next, the golf course, the golf tournament for next year. Uh huh. Thank you.
I never miss an opportunity to say thank you. I do want to say thank you. I want to say thank you so much to the committee, the hard work that you put in there. There's a lot of sweat and tears, and there was some rain asked as well, but thank you. These dollars go right back into your own community. Rappahannock United Way serves the city of Fredericksburg, and our mission is to improve lives by mobilizing the power of our community. And I can tell you that your city employees, they care about their community, and we are going to put these dollars to great use in improving lives. So thank you for your hard work, your dedication. You don't have to do this. You don't get paid extra to do it. It's because you care. We want to say thank you.
Because he's got cool socks and cool outfits. And we get to hear from another wonderful organization doing a lot of good work. We've heard about good citizens tonight, and we've heard about our wonderful city employees who support United Way. And now we're going to hear from Kathy Anderson, the Executive Director of Empower House, and Paul Aiken, a board member.
Good evening, and thanks for having us to talk for a few minutes. You may be aware that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. My name is Paul Aiken. I am a volunteer board member with Empower House, and you may not realize that we've been serving the Fredericksburg city for over 40 years.
I'm Kathy Anderson, Executive Director of Empower House. I know many folks and have talked with many of you over the years. Thank you for allowing us to address you and give you an update of what we've been doing, what's been going on. As you probably already know, we are a nonprofit accredited domestic violence services organization. We are the only domestic violence nonprofit serving the community, community-based in the area of Planning District 16. Just share the rest of our comments. We wanted to start the presentation, and it's a brief presentation, by sharing with you just a couple of sentences from four of the boys who attend our Teen Boys Program. This program has been around for 20 years, and we think that their words are poignant, particularly in light of our most and newest initiatives. One-third of the 15 boys currently attending the group have been court-referred from juvenile based probation. Paul's going to start, and we'll alternate their quotes.
I've learned a lot from this group, and will be passing down everything I've learned from my five little, to my five little brothers. The most important thing I'm going to pass down is that being a man doesn't mean that you're big and strong and don't cry. It's about talking and listening and taking the time to really care about people and myself.
In this program, I was able to talk about touchy subjects and get things off my chest without judgment. The facilitators were polite, welcoming, and made me really think about things: life, relationships, and even consequences.
Taking the time to relax and really understand what it means to be a good person has really lightened up my worldview in a positive way. A very big skill I've learned over the past 12 weeks is the importance of communication, really understanding how another person feels.
I used to have some of the worst weeks, but when I started going to group, my weeks got better. My attitude changed, and overall, as a person, I just felt better.
And just to recap a couple of our 2018 accomplishments, we have a new strategic plan with expanding Empower House, children, youth services, and education. This speaks to how we continue to serve youth and work to expand in it. The board took the 2017 year to design initiatives forward, going forward, and had planned big toward the effort of serving children and expanding education in the schools, so we can change the forecast of domestic violence in our community's future. We plan to double the number of classrooms and students reached in middle and high school this year from a current 4,000 to 8,000. We're working on introducing, producing two new short animated films to add to the film we launched earlier this year for teen audiences that was supported by the Women and Girls Fund of the Community Foundation. And these promote healthy relationships and educate on the warning signs of teen dating violence.
I want to point out that in the packet we provided you, Paul mentioned the strategic plan, which you have a copy of, and also this Relationships booklet for parents, A Guide to Healthy Relationships, great guide for your teens to read, but also for parents to have that conversation. It accompanies the film that we produced this year. In our collaborative work, that's the next thing I want to highlight, and our, more or less the final thing to highlight, you may not know that Mary Washington Hospital has been short a forensic nurse examiner for some time, and that has created a gap in our community where we have not had 24-hour coverage of that important service. Mary Washington Hospital asked Empower House to submit, to write and submit a grant to the U.S. Department of Justice Office on Violence Against Women, and we were awarded that competitive grant called the Improving Criminal Justice Response Program. That allows us to, with Mary Washington Hospital as a subrecipient, they'll be able to hire a new full-time forensic nurse examiner and restore 24-hour coverage. There were only two grants awarded in Virginia, and ours was one of those. If you didn't know it, the forensic nurse examiner is able to treat, in a trauma-informed way, victims of violent crime, including domestic violence, sexual assault, teen dating violence, and child crime victims. And we're very pleased that they will be able to do that restoration. It's a three-year grant. It's $450,000 over those three years, and we will be working very closely, as we have in the past, but in a new fashion. The other collaborative partnership that we want to share with you, and many of you are already aware, is our longtime work with our housing and homelessness partners. Out of all the efforts that we, in which we participate and collaborate, that is really our strongest and most time-consuming partnership. If you didn't know it, Empower House runs a domestic violence shelter, and in our programs, we are also able to administer rapid rehousing, in the form of financial assistance, case management, and an employment specialist through Rappahannock Goodwill Industries. In our work with our partners, George Washington Regional Commission, Thurman Brisbane Center, Lois Ann's Hope House, and MICA, we partner on a collaborative grant application. We are in committee work together weekly, and that includes designing our system and honing in and improving it. We collaborate on the initiative of coordinated entry for the homeless prevention and also a housing locator. Empower Springs additional rental assistance to our community through a U.S. Department of Justice grant. That's an Office on Violence Against Women grant, Transitional Housing. We've had that award for nine years, trying each of those times that it expires to renew it. We have been successful in doing so in our partnership with Rappahannock Goodwill Industries. This past cycle, they were the grantees, and we were the subrecipient, and we just received notification that we will have that for three more years. In that grant, some of the similar things I've talked about, we're able to provide our portion primarily for survivors of domestic violence and their children, their families. We also applied recently, in addition to a state collaborative grant that we share with our housing partners, to a HUD grant, where there was some domestic violence bonus money. We don't know if we will be awarded that grant. It's competitive, but we are very excited with that partnership and that our community is more competitive in the dollars we receive locally because of those strong partnerships we share with the folks I mentioned earlier. And lastly, just a few things about what was done last year in terms of our services. I didn't lead with this, but if you didn't know it, we served last year over 3,500 people in our community. We also educated almost 4,500 teens in area classrooms on the warning signs of teen dating violence and unhealthy relationships. We talked about wanting to expand that work this year, and we're working to do that. And in Fredericksburg, in the city of Fredericksburg, we served 72 residents with shelter and housing, and that included the case management and the rental assistance for some of those. In our shelter, we housed 50 victims of domestic violence, and that included their children. In our shelter, people can stay oftentimes, on average, for a month. Many stay longer and some stay shorter, but it is for victims of domestic violence. We responded to 431 calls from city residents on our 24-hour hotline, and those calls last year averaged 35 minutes each. Sometimes they can be an hour, sometimes they can be hours, and that includes the accompanying follow-up and connecting them with resources. We also served 54 Fredericksburg children, and that included helping them with physical, emotional, and social needs in a trauma-informed manager, in a trauma-informed manner, and through in-person services, through services at shelter, and through services at group. And in Fredericksburg, we only reached 138 teens in classroom presentations, and we hope to change that, considering that our highest number of teens reached are in Spotsylvania County and next Stafford County, and we think we can do better in Fredericksburg. And hopefully, with everyone's help, we will provide those presentations free of charge to the city classrooms, middle and high schools. We welcome your support to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the very good work that you do. We appreciate the report.
Thank you.
We have two public hearings this evening. Madam Clerk, will you please read Item 5A?
Providing for issuance and sale of general obligation bonds of the city of Fredericksburg, Virginia, in an amount not to exceed $17 million, and the form detail and payment thereof.
Thank you. I will call upon Mrs. Jatt, our Budget Manager.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. We are here tonight to hold a public hearing on the issuance of $17 million of general obligation bonds. The plan is to discuss the projects included in the bonds, followed by a discussion of the terms of the bonds, and finally, a discussion on the fiscal impact of the bonds. Staff recommends moving the vote on the ordinance to the latter part of tonight's agenda, namely, after council has had a chance to discuss and vote on Riverfront Park and the Snowden Forest Main Projects. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance on first read tonight. The last time the city issued general obligation bonds was in February of 2015, nearly four years ago. The city issued revenue bonds in 2016 for the R Board and will likely do so again in 2020. The city typically issues GO bonds on a two- to four-year cycle. The projects in the proposed bond issue include projects in the 2018 budget, as well as projects in the 2019 budget. Not all projects identified as bond-funded are included. Only projects currently underway, such as the ERP computer software system and the water and sewer PPEA project, or projects that will soon be underway, are included. Mr. Doug Fawcett and Mr. Dave King, as well as Mr. Whitley, are here if you have any specific questions about the projects I'm going to discuss. The city will use bond proceeds to fund $60,310,000 of project costs. There is $10,825,000 of general government projects. General government projects are funded through the city's general taxing authority. Included in this is an ambulance, the ERP system, improvements to the executive plaza, which include a new HVAC system, as well as various other renovations, as well as construction of Riverfront Park. The final government project is replacement of storm sewers in the college terrace area. This project is part of a larger PPEA contract. The PPEA project also includes both projects funded in the water, with water system revenues. These are College Terrace Water Line and the Greenbrier Drive Water Main. Several projects funded with wastewater system revenues are also included in the PPEA project and as well funded with bonds. These include the Carol These include the Caroline Street Sewer, which is nearing completion, the College Terrace Sanitary Sewer Project, and preliminary work related to a sewer line on National Park Service land. The PPEA contract was awarded in July, and as I've mentioned, construction has already begun on several of the phases. The bonds will also fund a sewer camera truck and a combination vet jet vacuum truck. The final project supported by wastewater system revenues are improvements to the Snowden Pump Station and a replacement of sections of the Snowden Forest Main. The scope of the project is being expanded due to two line breaks in August, as well as the result of discussions with the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. The project cost will increase to $550,000 from $100,000. A budget amendment appropriating an additional $450,000, which will be bond-funded, is agenda item 10B on tonight's agenda. I would now like to discuss the terms of the bonds. The bonds are currently scheduled to be issued in December of 2018 with a maximum principal amount of 17 million. The recommended budget included $20,658,000 of bonds. Of that, $11,913,000 were for general government projects, and these were presented on March 13th. 1.65 million of water projects and $7,95,000 of wastewater projects were presented to council on April 24th. As I said, the current estimate is the proceeds will fund $16,310 of project expenditures and an estimated $237,000 of expenses related to the cost of issuance and the underwriter's discount. The expected principal amount of the bond is $16,550,000. However, the not-to-exceed estimate of 17 million provides flexibility for market conditions that may exist on the sale date of the bonds. The bonds will be sold competitive competitively. The term of the bonds will be 20 years with level principal and a true interest cost is currently estimated at 3.35%. The bonds are backed by the city's general obligation pledge or full faith and credit pledge of the city's general taxing authority. Although all bonds carry the geo pledge, debt service is paid from the water fund and the sewer fund for those projects. A competitive sell for the bonds is scheduled for the week of November 12th. Proceeds will be available at closing, which is scheduled for the week of December 3rd. The timing, final principle, and debt service schedule are preliminary and may change. Rating agency presentations are scheduled for the week of October 22nd. All three rating agencies, Fitch, Moody's, and Standard &amp; Poor's, will visit the city in conjunction with their assessment of the city's credit worthiness. It's been over a decade since they visited. I'd now like to move on to discussing the fiscal impact. The city uses a strategy of pay-as-you-go and pay-as-you-use to finance capital improvement projects. Pay-as-you-go is the cash-funded portion of the CIP, in which current resources fund capital assets. Pay-as-you-use is the debt-finance portion of the CIP. The pay-as-you-use strategy spreads the cost of the project over the useful life of the project. Both are appropriate for funding capital improvements. The FY 2019 adopted budget includes an allowance for debt service on the proposed bonds. This was a partial year's debt service. In FY 2020, the city will pay a full year's debt service. In the general fund in 2020, the debt service related to the 2018A bonds is approximately $742,000. This includes $342,000 related to Riverfront Park. In FY 2020, the total general government debt is estimated at 8.7 million, which is an increase of approximately $284,000 over the amount approved in the FY 2019 adopted budget. However, because other debt is retired in 2021, the total general fund debt service schedule will be reduced in 2021 to 8.2 million. In the water fund in 2020, debt service on the 2018A bonds will be $90,000, and they will be $288,000 in the wastewater fund. And that includes debt service related to the Snowden Pump Station and Forest Main, which you will vote on later today. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Jett? Counselor Kelly?
Thank you. I think this is actually a question for the city manager and staff. Executive Plaza improvements, we talked about redoing the air conditioning units. This is going into a little more than that. You want to give me the rundown on what exactly we're doing?
Yes, sir. Mr. Kelly, I'll work to answer that question. We have $3.2 million in this package for council's consideration. As we briefed council on January 9th, 2018, the intention is to upgrade HVAC systems to the tune of about $2 million and then also make upgrades to floors three, four, and one. In addition to that, we expect to undertake some exterior renovations, as described to council earlier this year. I'd ask Mr. Fawcett if he thought I missed anything.
No, that's correct.
In regards to the upgrades and everything else like this, is this still related to shifting staff? Or is this just basics improvements we need for existing uses?
No, Mr. Kelly. It does include allowances for outfit of spaces to accommodate additional city employees. Again, as described in January, I'd be happy to-
I understand it was described. I just, I want to make sure when I was clear on what we got.
Right. Having said that, there has been no decision by council related to the visitor center on the first floor, which was part of the conversation last year. But again, we are talking about planning and building services, moving to floor four to create a one-stop shop as long envisioned by the city. We're also talking about moving and planning to move the economic development professionals to Executive Plaza as well. And other minor changes are also under consideration.
Any other questions for Ms. Jett or Mr. Beruthy? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this matter? If so, please approach the podium. Give us your name and your address, and you have five minutes. All right, then we will declare the public hearing closed. As the gen- as the agenda indicates, consideration, discussion and consideration of this item for first move read will occur under the city manager's agenda later in the meeting. Item 5B, Madam Clerk?
The city of Fredericksburg proposes to amend Unified Development Ordinance to define, permit, and regulate small data centers and data centers within the city of Fredericksburg. The amendments permit small data centers and data centers in commercial and industrial zoning districts provided performance standards for the uses and establish parking standards for the uses.
Thank you. I'll call on Mr. Craig, senior planner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The rise of the digital age has produced the need for warehousing, transformation, and processing of digital information. The need is met by dedicating buildings or portions of buildings to computers, servers, telecommunications, and related equipment. The size of the operation and the corresponding impact varies. Some are small and can function in an office suite without any external impact at all. Some are housed in independent buildings as large as a shopping center, which require regulations to properly manage the building mass scale and potential impact on the city's water supply. And we're talking tonight about data centers. They are currently not a permitted use in the city of Fredericksburg. The ordinance before you all today would make them a use in our use table and then assign regulations to them, performance standards and parking standards. The ordinance defines two levels of data center use. A small data center would be one. It's less than 10,000 square feet. And a data center would be greater than or equal to 10,000 square feet. Small data centers carry relatively little impact. They're probably less intensive use than an office. They are proposed to be permitted by right in all commercial, mixed-use, non-residential, planned development, and industrial zoning districts. Data centers are proposed to be permitted by right in I-2 only and by special use permit in the remaining commercial, mixed-use, non-residential, planned development, and industrial zoning districts. The outline, the draft ordinance that you have assigns performance standards to that data center use. And in summary, it requires architectural differentiation of proposed building facades so that we don't get a very large shopping center-sized data center that is just one long tilted-up concrete wall. It requires screening of all mechanical and electrical equipment. And some of the data centers, the larger ones, have, you know, equipment from, you know, regular generators all the way up to their own substations. And those would all, the whole range of equipment would be required to be screened. And the third performance standard, and probably the most important, is that anytime a data center utilized a water-based cooling system, meaning that the warehouse of servers was going to hook into the city water supply, and all those servers would be cooled using that technology, that would require a special use permit even in the I-2 zoning district. We had some discussion or got some comments about data centers previously from the city council during work session and also from the planning commission, and so I thought I would just try to give the answers to those here. The first question was whether or not water used to cool the servers once discharged back into the city sewer system posed any threats to the city's water treatment. We looked through this. It, whether or not you add anything to the water depends on what system you chose. So again, this kind of reinforces the idea that any water cooling system should have a special use permit. Some systems don't. The water never really comes into contact with server parts. It's all within a closed piping system. It's all within the pipes that run through the servers. But depending on the type of system that's designed, some are left open, kind of like your Keurig. The water sits in there for a while, and then chemical treatments or other things are added. So as part of that special use process, we would, we would look at the system, look at how the water is treated, look at the discharge of that water to the system, and even the rate at which it's discharged. So we have the proper protection in, built into this ordinance to monitor all those things and make sure that the protections in place are sufficient. The second question by the planning commissioner was whether or not we could require data centers to utilize alternative energy. It's a big building. It's several acres potentially of building. Can we require them to fill the entire roof with solar panels, which is a very interesting thought? We cannot. However, we do have a special use permit standard. The, it's in the typical standards that the council and the planning commission use to review these things that say, that says evaluate whether or not there are any impacts from noise, light, dust, odor, fumes, vibration, or other factors which adversely affect the natural environment. Could that include alternative energy? That would be something you all would have to evaluate as a permit came through. The third question we got very recently from Mr. Graham was about the parking requirements. Currently, our ordinance is set up to have parking minimums. But I did want to point out something. The purpose statement for this section of our ordinance, so this is, if you're reading through the ordinance, you get to off-street parking. There's always a purpose. Why do we do this? And part of that purpose statement says, it says to provide adequate parking and that type of thing. But then it also says to avoid excessive paved surface areas and promote low-impact development. That's a theme, a purpose for our parking standards. We have parking maximums built in. We have a system of parking minimums. And you can only exceed that by 125% before you need an alternative parking plan from our zoning administrator. And if you try to go above 175%, it requires a special use permit from you all. So that's already here. We are proposing in this ordinance that, let me pull it up. These uses require a minimum four parking spaces, and I'm just going to talk about the big data centers for now. A minimum of four parking spaces for the first 4,000 square feet, and then one parking space for every additional 6,000 square feet. So that would be what is currently required. Mr. Graham asked us to think through what, how we would apply maximum parking standards. We would have to work with Ms. Dooley on presenting an option for you all. But it could be simply that we just change the word minimum to maximum. I spoke with Mr. Graham today. We would want to look at the number and make sure that there's enough built in that we weren't precluding the right amount of parking, but it's certainly an idea worth consideration if you all would like that option presented. And as Mr. Graham suggested in his email, it could be a second read thing potentially too, if that's how you all propose to handle it. The public, the planning commission held a public hearing on this item on September 12th, at which no one spoke. After some discussion about the nature and significance of the small data center and the general data center, the planning commission voted five to oh to recommend approval of the text amendment to the city council. That is the staff recommendation as well. This is an ordinance, so it will take two reads, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, then, yes, Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Craig, thank you for addressing the question I had earlier. I also wanted to ask, as the planning commission meeting minutes came up around the solar panels. Now, you said we can't require that, but is there something that we could do to maybe incentivize that and build that into the ordinance?
I think that's what I was getting at with that one review criteria. If someone came in with a plan that had solar panels on it, that would be a positive that you would review under that criteria.
But is there anything that we could build into it to maybe encourage people to do that more than just their own thoughts?
We looked at this with the attorney's office. Where you get your electricity from is not under the same authority in the state code, my understanding. I'm summarizing here. And that's, I'm out of my comfort zone with that. And that's, that's why we worked with the attorney's office, and Kathleen, I don't know if you have anything to add.
Ms., Madam City Attorney?
Yes, I merely advise planning that. The building code establishes the minimum standards for construction, including energy systems for a building. And we can't override that in the zoning regulations. So if it's something that we consider as a positive in the review, that's a good thing and that might get us there. There are also various tax reduction programs available. We've looked into some of those already, and we're continuing to study those types of incentives. They don't come through the zoning regulations, but they might come through tax incentives.
Great. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Weathers.
Thank you, thank you. Just generally thought that the, these types of centers require less parking than other uses. So I guess my question is, if, if, if we're requiring less use. I found it a couple of weeks ago, as you know, Mr. Craig, you and I talked about it a little bit, that, that you can change uses in a commercial zone. And, and it can go from a low-density parking requirement to a high-density parking requirement, the type of use. But our ordinances don't allow us to require, if it's a change, changing use, we can't require more parking. That's my understanding from Mr. Johnson. So, you know, this is a little off track, but if you've got a huge center with a minimum amount of parking and the use changes, and it requires more intense parking, it's not much we can do about it. I, I'm bringing this up simply because I think we need to look at that ordinance. I think we need to look at, look at ways that when, when uses change that will require much more parking that might filter over adjoining neighborhoods because they can't park on site. We need to kind of look into that. So I'm asking once again if we'll go, go down that road to talk about that, at least see how that goes. It's happened in my neighborhood where a use was for a little office that's gone to a restaurant. And you can't, you know, you can't require any more parking. So obviously, the parking goes into the neighborhood. So thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Craig.
Thank you. I see Mr. Johnston nodding and Mr. Craig nodding. So yes, that's a consideration. Any other questions for Mr. Craig? This is a public hearing. Is anyone here who would like to speak to this matter? Then we will declare the public hearing closed. It is an ordinance, and it is before us for the first read. Counselor Duffy?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to follow up on Mr. Weathers's comment. These are relatively new facilities. Is there any, any experience out there for these facilities being repurposed already? Do we know? I would be curious about that. Because that, it seems, strikes me as they would have limited reuses maybe. I don't know.
That's a good question. We can, we can look into that. The one that we saw, that we went and toured, the building was engineered for this use. It wouldn't lend itself to anything else.
Right.
And that, I would- And that, I would assume, would normally be the case. There's so technical, there's so many technical requirements. It would be very difficult to probably repurpose one of these. But you're right, it's a relatively new phenomenon, so we haven't gotten there yet.
And that the city attorney agrees that this can be a second read issue, that we could settle the parking?
Yes.
Okay. In that case, I'm comfortable moving the first read.
Second.
Defining permitting and regulating small data centers and data centers.
All righty, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Craig. We now come to the point in our meeting when we accept comments from the public for people who have signed up to speak before the meeting. We have, we have two people signed up tonight. I think maybe only one of them is present. I will call upon Matt Good.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Please give your name and address.
Yes, my name is Matt Good. Address, I guess we'll say 1301 College Avenue. This specific building does not have its own address. I'm a University of Mary Washington student and the president of the student government for the 2018-19 academic year.
Hi, my name is Adina Moven. Address 1701 College Avenue. This is my first year at Mary Washington and my first year in Fredericksburg, and I'm really appreciative to being welcomed to such a kind community, so thank you.
Madam Mayor, I want to first thank you again for coming to the recent civic action event that was held at the university center. We really appreciate having a city presence at events like that, and I think despite a lower student turnout, I think it meant something to have yourself and have some of the community there to be able to interact with and engage with on those issues. So I appreciate that. What Adina didn't mention is that her title, she serves in our legislative body, our senate, and she serves as the Community Relations Chairperson. SGA underwent a major renovation in our constitution, which is slightly easier to do than the real thing. And part of that came renewed interest and renewed vows in doing a lot of things that SGA hadn't done before, and one of those was a heavy emphasis on getting back into the community relations sphere, getting back into liaising with our neighbors around us, College Heights, Sunken Road, and engaging with the city as a whole. So part of that is to come here and extend the olive branch on behalf of the university and my administration, to thank you all for the work that you've done in assisting our university to be as great as it has been, and to hopefully be as great as it will be in the future. Would also like to say that I'm looking forward to see some of the council members this Thursday at one of the town and gown meetings for this year. Hopefully, have a great opportunity to discuss the issues that we both face and give reports and updates to what we could be doing together with that. Adina?
So yeah, as a Community Relations Chair, I'm really excited to build that strong connection between the students of Mary Washington and citizens of Fredericksburg. So I'm really excited to foster that relationship between the students and the citizens, so I'm excited.
As always, we thank you very much for your support and having us here this evening. Please feel free to contact myself or the university, get in touch with us on, if you have questions for a student perspective or student voice or anything such as that. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you. We appreciate very much your coming. I appreciate it being invited to be part of your civic engagement program and other programs on campus, and I assure you that the, any member of the council here would welcome the opportunity to come speak or be part of an activity. We're very, very proud of our university, and we're very proud of you for making such a smart choice for your university. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Frye? Oh, okay. Does any, is there any agenda item that any council would like to place, council would like to place on the council agenda? Counselor Frye? I'll get that out in a minute.
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. First one, I have two, and they'll be very quick. History submissions would be the first one.
History submissions?
Yes.
Okay.
And the second one, I'll title it, how about Public Works?
Public Works, okay. Anybody else? All right, Counselor Frye, item 7A is history submissions.
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. Just wanted to take a minute publicly. There, it's funny, Mr. Weathers and I, Mr. Weathers sent me an email the other day, we were touching base and just talking about meeting and discussing some information about history, and today I was cutting grass, and one of my neighbors, who still calls me Little Charlie, stopped me while I was cutting grass today. Mr. Holmes is in the audience tonight, and we had a conversation, and the conversation was about history in the city. And of course, there's a, there's a lot, a lot of steam going on in the city right now of, of like the whole story of Fredericksburg. And most importantly, that there's a void in a lot of the African-American history in the city, which as a council, and something that we are in the middle of anyway. So I always tell folks, you know, if you have something of importance or whatever, that's what that podium is for. And Mr. Holmes didn't know if he could make it tonight, but he showed up, so he didn't make the podium, he didn't make the list tonight. But I told him, you know, in his absence, that I would at least bring it and bring it to the table, and also to let the public know that, let me say it like this, a lot of people have a lot of history about the city of Fredericksburg. A lot of people are getting older, a lot of people have passed. There's a lot of information in people's homes right now that, you know, their mother, grandmother, somebody had laying around that's important to the city. And considering that, the story of African-American history in the city, a lot of people feel that it wasn't told in the full content, some people just, they don't, they don't know what to do, so it's kind of like they felt like nobody cared, not speaking for Mr. Holmes, I'm not saying, some people feel like nobody cared. So why submit it? Because they've been here all their life, and they've never seen it when they come to, you know, the museum, or they've never seen this part of it. So I'm just saying publicly, whatever folks have, reach out to us, reach out to your council reps, come down to city hall. If the first person you see is the treasurer's office, let them know what you're trying to do, somebody will direct you. But just, my whole, my whole point in this is saying, reach out to us, let us know, we have, I keep saying um, but Kate Schwartz, we have historic preservation person in the city on the second floor that, you know, can help, how to document this information. A lot of people, it's delicate, sometimes people save stuff because a family member was involved or different reasons, and we can, we can, we can copy this information, we can do whatever, so we can have it documented. And it's, it's cool to me that the conversation happened today. I was already in the middle of the conversation. I've been, the conversation's been floating, so I'm just saying publicly, whatever you have, please submit it to us somehow, any, any one of us, we're not hard to find, and I'm six-six, so I'm, you can spot me anywhere in the city. So, you know, just reach out to us and we'll do whatever we can. So this is, you know, publicly from, from a resident, Mr. Holmes, this is my, you know, saying, hey, Mr. Holmes, hey, if you have something, you know, we want it, and, and that's why I'm saying it publicly. This is something that I could have did this morning, I could have did it by email, but I'd rather do it publicly, just to say, hey, bring it to us, and we want this information. And even the oral history, if we had to find a way to tell these stories, we have to do it, so mainly that's it. So in the future, I hope, very soon, when February comes, and which we know is Black History Month, that we'll have something going on in the city of Fredericksburg. It only makes sense, I mean, it just totally makes sense, it's like a void, and with a city that's so full of history, we have all of these kids that come through this whole school system, they all go to school together, they go to kindergarten, and they graduate together. And not many communities do that. We have it here in Fredericksburg. So the scope of information that's right here, up the street from their school, at, for 15 years of their life, and they're not getting the information, you know, so they're going to college and learning about somewhere else when they, it's full of history here in Fredericksburg. So once again, whatever you have, submit it, we'll do our part to get it to where it needs to be and have it documented, and so on and so forth.
I see Vice Mayor Weathers ready to speak, and I know what he's going to say, and I'm going to lead into it. We have a heritage center here, which does a wonderful job of preserving and digitizing information. I mean, I turned in my mother's minutes of the garden council or, you know, whatever, but they, they really do a wonderful job of copying information and pictures and making it available online for historians, and that is properly conditioned space. Mr. Weathers is one of the many volunteers that work in that heritage center. You want to follow up, Billy?
Yeah, I do. The Heritage Center has reached out to Mr. Frye, and he and I have talked, and I'm trying to set up a meeting now. He has to meet at 7:30, they don't open to 10:00, so I have to pull those folks in early. But Mr. Frye, as we talked earlier, I think it's important, important to know that there are people out there that have documents that they really don't want to give up, but the Heritage Center is perfectly willing to copy those documents and give those documents back to you. And they, of the, last time I checked, it was around 160,000 documents, there are over 50,000 online that you can go right online and look up. And they are extremely interested in telling the African-American history story, so they've, they've seen you talk about it, so they contacted me and said that they want to hook up with you and get that information. So I think it's a good source, it's a way that you can, we can, we can better tell the story that maybe hasn't been told. So thank you.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you. Item 7B is Public Works. Counselor Frye?
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. Probably when I say this stuff, somebody in Public Works probably, Mr. King, like, what is he about to say? But Mr. King's the director there, but I just want to take a moment to brag on our Public Works Department, and I want to touch base on two things real quick, and I know Mr. Nelson is in the transportation, but I'll just give this scenario real quick. There's, there's been a longstanding history of cut-through traffic in, on Airport Avenue, off of Route 2 during rush hour, and just last night when I got off work, there was, there's a sign up now that says no left turns on, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and this is like very, very new. I'm pretty sure a lot of neighbors haven't seen it yet, but it's, it's to eliminate a lot of the cut-through traffic. We have these issues all over the city, and Airport Avenue is kind of unique because it's, it's like the main drag, I could say, in the neighborhood. And I just, I can, I can backdate just a few years of Mr. Foster, Mr. King, and the city staff about sidewalks. Had one convenience store and for years never had a sidewalk, so we just did that, not saying we, I say that Public Works just did that, within the last few years, to kind of help the kids go, you know, give them a safe spot to go get their slurpees and stuff, so that's just, it's as simple as that. It really is, it's really that simple. And I have to take this moment because our Public Works crew, like, and it's, anybody I call in the city is on it, and I'm pretty sure if the residents, not because I'm a councilman, I'm pretty sure if residents call, they'll do the same thing. But little things that, that kind of go unnoticed, I just, I feel it's my, my job to say, hey, you know, this, this really makes a big difference. So I can already see it being safer. Might be a few tickets out there, don't blame me for the tickets, please, but just read the sign, don't, don't call me about the ticket. But I'm pretty sure that's going to happen, and once it happens, I mean, things, things will settle down and it just make things safer. So I wanted to say to Public Works and Mr. Nelson Transportation, I wanted to say thank you, and then that was the first half of that. And also, going to take one more bragging moment to brag on Mrs. Byer, Ms. Byer, very, a great asset to the city, I want to say. I'm talking about quick, I'm, I'm, I mean, very fast, and folks ask me a question or they need help with something, and to the fact of where like there was, there was an elderly lady, elderly lady one time and needed some help with her grass, long story short, Ms. Byer took care of it. Didn't cause the taxpayers anything, I would say that. But I mean, to have folks that work in the city when people are in need and can kind of relate to folks and help them, you know, like, people take a job, but they end up dealing with people. So I just want to say to our folks, you know, that I appreciate it, and I know that a lot of residents do, and we don't have like a Public Works Gala or nothing like that. Maybe we need to work on that in the future, you know, to show our appreciation, but these folks do a lot of stuff behind the scenes, and I mean, it's them and their staff, and it's a lot that goes on, so that's all I want to say, Mayor Greenlaw.
Thank you, Counselor Frye, and that is so true. I get compliments on our Public Works staff frequently. Does any council want to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, consent agenda submitted.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
We have five sets of minutes before us, August 28th, September 11th, September 25th, public hearings September 25th, and the regular session September 25th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If so, do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Item 10A is an ordinance on second read. I will call upon Mr. Schaefer, our building official.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is a second read on the request to amend the city code regarding membership qualification for the local Board of Building Code Appeals and the Local Board of Fire Protection Code Appeals. This amendment would mirror the language for membership qualifications in the Virginia Uniformed Statewide Building Code for local Board of Code Appeals and would also, excuse me, also allow membership to qualified persons who are interested in serving on the appeals board but are not residents of the city. This amendment would help ensure that there is a significant pool of applicants to maintain the five-member requirement who are able to render a fair and competent decision on appeals brought before the board. All applicants would need to meet the requirements and qualifications required by the Virginia Uniformed Statewide Building Code and ultimately be approved by council. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Vice Mayor Weathers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, Mr. Schaefer, thank you for taking time to talk to me about this yesterday. And secondly, it brought to my attention that I misspoke last week in saying that you had made a poor presentation. I certainly did not mean that. I said something about a poor presentation. I, I don't know why, what I said or why I said it, but it certainly, it was, that was, I didn't mean that. As you know, I did not like the deduction of the all members. But anyway, I just want to let you know, I told you that yesterday, but I want to say that publicly, in case anybody publicly heard me say that, so I want to clear that up. Having said that, I'm going to make a motion to pass ordinance 1815 on second read with one exception, under B rather than in section 10, 213, a membership officials under B, there's cross there, all members shall be residents of the city. I would, I would make a motion to have that say that members should be, should contain at least two residents or persons who are licensed in the city to do work in the city. And I'm going to let it go with that, and I'm going to get some feedback on whether or not you, you accept that.
Yeah, I think that would be fine. I just, what we're trying to do is fill this board.
Yeah. And listen, I agree with Mr. Duffy, what he said, it's more important to have qualified people, but it's hard for me to really take that we don't have at least a couple of residents in the city. And I told, I told Mr. Schaefer yesterday, I said, if you can't get them, you give me their names and I'll go get them for you, because I just really believe that there are some residents, we ought to have some residents if possible. I like the word if, it doesn't have to be residents, the main thing I want to see is that is that they at least are licensed to do, to do do, uh, to do work in the city in, in the categories that they-
Is that the proper language? Would it be licensed to do work in the city or, I guess, Mr. Schaefer, you can help us out here, is, is that language too restrictive? I, I get what you're getting at, Vice Mayor Weathers. You want somebody who does work in the city.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, they do work in the city, they are required to be licensed.
Okay. So, that would be the proper way to word it. Okay.
Okay. So, would you prefer that I do away with the residents altogether? Have it at least one residence. Have it at least one resident.
Well, right now, we have four that are residents in the city. And I guess this is just so that we'll have the pool.
I know what you're trying to do and, and I'm all in on that, but at the same time, I, I just, it, it pains me to think that this body doesn't feel like that we have any residents in here that would, would serve when called upon. So, uh, that's my reasoning for it.
All right. I'm not clear whether we've got the motion defined yet.
I'm, I'm not clear either, whether I-
All right, let's back up and start over on defining the motion.
Let's just say that, uh, strike, uh, strike all members, uh, B, where it strikes all members, shall be residents of the city. We insert, uh, uh, at least one member should be, uh, a, a, a resident of, of the city and other members could be, uh, must, must be, uh, people who are licensed to do business in the city. Has that?
Either, well, I would say either or. You don't want necessarily require them all to be licensed, do you?
No. What the, the state code says that there be a qualified builder, architect, and a, a person of property management.
There you go.
But, but what I'm trying to get at is, is I want to make sure that those people work in the city. Uh, I, I would hate to see us have to take people from Spotsylvania and Stafford to, to make judgment on things that people that work in the city.
Well, again, it, we're looking for qualified people that understand the building code and fire code to render decisions on appeals. And they might be from Spotsylvania and they might be from Stafford, but they are qualified and they're usually going to be the professionals, the architects, the engineers, electrical contractors, plumbing contractors. That's what we have now.
But the-
But are you, are you saying that-
But don't you have to have a business license to be in the city, to work in the city?
If you perform work in the city, that's correct.
Yeah. Okay, well, maybe business licenses would be a better term.
Madam City Attorney?
Madam Mayor, um, Mr. Extrim and I studied this, uh, question very closely to see if we couldn't work the business license into the requirement somehow. We found it a little bit difficult. Um, if you are, if you are a builder, if you, if your office is in the city, you have a bus, business license from the city. If your office is outside the city, but you do $25,000 a year of work in the city, you get a, a business license from the city. So, when we're talking about builders, the business license requirement can make sense, assuming you're the business owner. Because it's the business that gets the business license and not necessarily its employees. But then when we went to the, um, professional engineer, architect, or registered design professional, their work for business license purposes will be attributed to the definite place of business that they have. And if that definite place of business is in Stafford County and you're an engineer, then that's where you have your business. Well, of course, you, you would comply with Stafford County business license. There would be no requirement for you to have a city business license if you're an engineer, architect, or registered design professional, because your work would be attributed to your office. It's the builders that get different when they come to do work in the city. And we just, we considered, so we considered those distinctions in the types of people that you're looking for. And then we looked at the business itself, which gets the license and not necessarily the employees. And that's where Rob and I finally fell back to say, look, um, your, your administrative manual, city council's own manual, and your own guidelines as to who you choose for committees says, appoint residents whenever feasible. And so, I think if we bring non-resident appointments, which I, I think the positions have been empty for several years, despite repeated advertising for volunteers for these boards, th, we'll have to tell you that we, we've tried to find city residents to fill the position and here are the contacts. So, we have these volunteers instead. Here are their contacts with the city. And you're probably going to find that, in fact, they do a lot of work in the city because otherwise, uh, they're probably unlikely to be involved. But when we tried to make it part of the code itself and make it a legal requirement, it, it just started tying your hands again. And the whole point is to make you available, make, make a applicant pool available for appointment.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Madam Attorney.
Counsel Kelly, excuse me. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Billy.
I, I thought about calling you today and I should have done that. Uh, I was reading something else and I thought about it and I kept on reading. Uh, I'm sorry. Did someone else have a hand up?
Yo.
I want to echo one thing the City Attorney said. Ultimately, it's our decision, one, two. And if I may ask, in, in reading what this board is, this is more of a technical decisions they're making with regard to the building code. So, frankly, whether they're a resident or not, uh, to Dr. Duffy's point, this is really an issue where you want people that have the technical expertise. I don't see how, whether it's a city resident or not, really, in this particular case, I mean, there's other boards and commissions. I think there should be all city residents. But this is really making technical decisions with regard to the building code. And I think that's more, when you're talking about electricity and making sure you're not burning somebody's house down or plumbing blowing up or something else like that, I think I'd lean to expertise as opposed to resident.
And, and I thoroughly agree with that. And, and I wouldn't think that we would appoint somebody to the, the, the committee that didn't have that expertise. I would never want that to happen. So, let me do this. I'm going to make one more shot. Uh-oh, my machine went off. Um, I'd like to replace, to say that at, at, at least two, uh, technically, uh, savvy people, or however you want to say that, should be, not must be, but should be, uh, city residents. How about that?
Madam City Attorney, it's the word should. Does that demand that it is? Excuse me. Counsel divine, that's something to say.
I don't know if we need to, I mean, it is up to us, but can we just put preference would be given to city residents?
That's, hey, I'll accept that.
That's good. Thank you, Madam Teacher. Save the day. Okay, so the, Madam Clerk, do you have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion. I don't have a-
All right. Let's let the clerk read the motion and we'll see if we get a second.
We have a second.
We have a second?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's going to be, preference should be given to city residents.
Preference shall be. Yeah.
And thank you very much, Mr. Byer.
All right. Okay. Mr. Schaefer? Is that me, muster?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Um, item 10B is a first-read resolution budget amendment. I'll call on Mrs. Jett.
We briefly touched on this project when we discussed the bond issue. This is a budget amendment, um, increasing the cost of the Snowden pump station in Forest Main project from $100,000 to $550,000. The difference will be cash, I mean, will be funded with, um, bond proceeds. 100,000 of this is cash-funded. Um, just very briefly, we've had several breaks in the Forest Main, in the Snowden area, uh, as a result of the type of pipe that was installed in the, um, 1990s. It's a C-900 plastic pipe. There were two breaks in August. A previously, a previous break in 2015, um, led to us having discussions with DEQ and them issuing a consent order that required the installation of pressure release valves. Um, and they encouraged us at that time to replace the portion, the portions of the Forest Main, um, that were plastic pipe with ductile iron. So, because of the two breaks that occurred in August, we're now recommending, uh, Mr. Fawcett and, um, Mr. King can discuss the options if necessary that we reviewed, but after evaluating several options, we came up with a plan to replace the remaining portions of the Forest Main with ductile iron. So, we're requesting that, um, council, uh, include, approve the budget appropriation and then these will be included in the bond project.
Uh, Counsel Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I'll, I'll direct us to either Mr. King or Mr. Fawcett. Um, in my time on council, these have been kind of dealing with issues like this come up quite often. Uh, we've been pretty much spending millions of dollars every year on upgrades and stuff for the water and sewer system. Can you give me a quick heads up on where we are, uh, let's say in the next four or five years? I'm assuming we're going to continue down the road. We've been traveling the last few years in regards to some upgrades and improvements in the water sewer system. And also what the current status is, our discussions with Spotsylvania County on the, the whole water treatment issue and where we are on that.
The answer to your first question is yes.
Okay.
The answer to your second question is that, um, in recent discussions with, uh, our counterparts at Spotsylvania County, it appears that, uh, the county needs to engage in expansion of two facilities in the, in the near term, defined as maybe the next decade. The Motz Run Water Treatment Plant and the Massaponics Wastewater Treatment Plant. And of course, the second of those plants is the one that's relevant for the purposes of wastewater consolidation. Uh, the most recent information we have from the county is that they, um, because they're both quite expensive, uh, utilities projects, that they are not prepared to take them on at the same time and that they're moving toward expanding the Motz Run Water Treatment Plant first. So, that will affect, uh, the timing of wastewater consolidation and perhaps even the options that, that we will eventually need to pursue. Uh, this is relatively new information, uh, not even completely vetted yet, not even completely confirmed yet, but it has been reported to us from, from our staff that, uh, and we had had, uh, I'd had a conversation with my counterpart, Ed Petrovich, over at the county some time ago about this possibility. And it seems as they, as they are studying matters further, they are currently leaning toward expanding the Motz Run Water Treatment, Clean Water Treatment Facility prior to then the Massaponics Facility, which the net result of that would be a somewhat later expansion of the Massaponics Plant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Counsel Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kind of a two-part question here. Uh, number one, uh, do we have any knowledge or estimates, I guess, of how much of this C-900 plastic pipe remains in the city? Uh, because it, it sounds like we've, it's a little troublesome. Uh, but then, uh, second, is there any sort of perhaps, uh, financial or economic incentive for us to try to replace the remaining C-900 plastic pipe, if, if it exists elsewhere in the city, before future breaks occur? Uh, just looking here at the, you know, the 15 and the 2017 breaks, uh, with the, installing the pressure relief valves and then wondering if there's, you know, other cleanup costs required as a result of these breaks? If there might be, excuse me, uh, might be a way for us to get ahead of this issue in the future for the rest of the city?
In my time here, I believe this is, this is a unique situation with this particular material. This, this was installed when the Kern Hospital was built and when the facilities to serve the Kern Hospital was built. Um, I'm not aware, are you, Dave, of other cases of C-900 pipe? Now, um, that being said, the, the most common way of discovering that we have, um, C-900 pipe in the community is when it fails and we dig it up and say, oh, there's some C-900 pipe. Uh, we have not had, as I say, I think this is a, in my experience, this is a unique case with this particular material in the 21 years plus I've been here. So, I think it's fair to say we don't have much elsewhere. I would not be prepared to, to put my right hand up here and say, we don't have it anywhere else, because if I did, it would fail tonight. Uh, so, uh, but I, I think this is a pretty unique situation as far as, as this particular material is concerned. If we were to build it today, we'd build it with ductile iron from, from day one.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further questions? This is a first read.
Madam Mayor, I move first read approving fiscal year 2019 budget amendment appropriating funds for the water, wastewater enterprise fund and the wastewater system improvement fund.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Item 10C, I'll call on Mr. Fawcett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the, the resolution before you, uh, is designed to, uh, authorize and direct the city manager to perform certain tasks leading up to, uh, a recommendation to the city council to award a contract for the construction of the Riverfront Park. The actions that you would be authorizing and directing him to take by adoption of the resolution would be to complete the design, uh, to prepare all construction documents, to advertise the project for construction bids, to evaluate those bids, and then bring a recommendation to the city council, uh, for contract award. There's also provision in the resolution that, uh, referencing the budget for the project and directing the city manager to utilize all appropriate tools, financial tools, to, uh, bring the project in, bring the bids in, so to speak, uh, within that budget, including such things as value engineering, the use of add alternates and deduct alternates in the bidding process. And, uh, and there's a general reference to any other appropriate tools that could be used to, to bring a, a recommendation to this council within project budget. That is the essence of the resolution and I'll be glad to address any questions that you have.
Any questions for Mr. Fawcett? Counsel Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No specific questions. Um, you know, one of the things in, in looking at the public comments, and I'm not saying anything I haven't said for a long period of time, um, and talking to a lot of people, everybody would like to see a park downtown. Uh, I don't think that is in any way in question. Uh, the fundamental question I get quite a bit is, why $5 million for a park and $5 million in a floodway? Um, I have, not, again, not saying anything I haven't said before, when we started down this road, there was a few things that we had set up as, these are what we're going to do. One, park not constructed until all parking replaced, that is going to be taken out. We've kind of gone away from that and said, well, we've got a parking deck, we can count that, and we might get some parking spaces up at, at the northern end if the VACOS projects actually get started. And we're going to count those now, so we're not going to replace the parking and we're just going to move forward with park. The other aspect of it was, we're going to go ahead and open up the rivers because nobody knows where the river is. And now what we're doing is we're pushing everybody back off the river. We're creating a meadow, which I still, for whatever reason, cannot understand, other than we want to get the bowl edged out, what the real purpose of taking a bunch of space that we currently use for events and losing it. And in doing that also, opening up that whole area, because we are dropping it down significantly for flooding and everything else that's going to go on. And I understand what staff said on our one meeting that I had to leave a little bit early, uh, when invasive species and debris comes over, oh, we'll just bush hog it every year. We'll take care of it, because invasive species were a problem. They ain't going to take care of it. It's going to become a problem as it has in other locations, uh, along the river. When the Riverfront Task Force first started years and years ago, and I'm talking about the first one, not the second one, you know, the task was, look at all the city's riverfront property and let's start looking at how we can put maybe boat dock here, this facility there, something else, and then look at, look at it in its totality. And what we've done is, is we've taken everything and we're trying to cram it into a very small space, which got even smaller, because now we talked about, well, we're not going to take all the parking out, we're only going to take part of the parking out. And then we kind of talk about the other part of the parking as phase two, but there's not really a phase two. At the last meeting we had with regards to the stage, and I do want to thank staff, you know, for preservation of section of the mound. I wish we could preserve the whole mound, as we had originally talked about, as part of the plan. And, you know, moving the stage, I think the stage did need to be moved. We've got a bigger stage, we've got more going in there. We, we have, in a way, increased the cost. But again, we're trying to push a lot of stuff, uh, into a small space. But again, we're trying to push a lot of stuff into a small space. Another issue that I have brought up consistently is, and one of the questions to Doug with regards to what we're looking at, water sewer costs and everything else coming down the pike, that's going to be a continued cost. We've had our meeting with our school board counterparts. And in the course of that conversation, we initially said, we cannot afford to build a new school. We've started down to do a study on what we could do about adding on existing schools. And now that study is looking at all options, including still building new schools. And I think that report is due in about a month or two to us and the council on the school board. And we potentially are still looking at the school board coming back and say, you know what, you can add on to it, but maybe that's not going to be enough, just only to carry over for a few years, we end up having to build a new school. I'd really like to have that information before I start moving forward. And that's a big item regardless, because frankly, for the past few months, I've been sitting in these meetings with the school board, trying to explain to them that we're looking at fire stations, we're looking at increased fire personnel, more police personnel, water and sewer improvements up to you know what, now we're going to potentially building a road. And there's a lot of things coming down the pike at us that makes it difficult to meet a lot of what they are asking for us to do, which is basically come up with a million dollars a year and have new revenue, which is going to be difficult for us to do. Not, I mentioned, capital projects. With regards to capital, I want to thank the comment that we do get a bit of a dip between '20 and '21. But the fact of the matter is, we're still looking at '20-'30 before we see any significant dip in our debt service. So everything we are adding on now is adding on to that. And again, when I'm looking at fire stations, equipment, personnel, the fact that we practically didn't give our employees that much of a boost in salary the last few years. I do get a little antsy about what would be or should be our priorities. I think this part can be done. I'm really concerned about putting $5 million into a floodway, knowing that there are going to be issues. It might not be this year, it might be next year, whatever, but everything's pointing to it and it's pointing to everywhere else. You look at Fountain with Bottom, you look at Old Mill and what happens to those, it's an issue and will continue to be an issue. You know, I think C.S. Lewis said it best, you know, sometimes progress is understanding you might have taken the wrong road coming back and taking a different road. I would hope that frankly, instead of just, and I know what the comment's going to be, we've been studying this for years and years and years, it's time to pull the trigger. And again, I think some people who I have great respect for have come up with some concerns and issues with the park design, brought them forward, all the council members got them well over a month and a half ago. As far as I'm aware, they didn't get much of a response from anybody on those. And when we talked about here, in our one public session, which lasted, what, about two hours? Didn't get a lot of response on it. So I've kind of got a concern about that. I've got a concern about spending the money. I think the community has a bit of a concern about how much money we're spending on this. And I think we've all heard it, you know, there are other priorities and other things to do. Can we find something to do this, to use all the space that's available instead of reducing the space, pushing us back from the river? Other than, well, if you put the meadow in, we can bush hog it and it's going to be easier to take care of. For a million and a half, I would say that the cost return on that is probably not very good. So I will not be supporting the plan as it currently stands and hope that we can still have some discussion on this and more public input on this as we go on by, including going back to the original concept, which was, let's look at all our property on the river. What are we going to do? Why are we taking everything and putting it on one space? Again, a question I'm getting a lot of too. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Withers.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to answer the question about the parking. You know, I must have been in the parking garage 100 times in the last two or three years and it's typically half full or less. And I've been pretty well convinced that that area will be, will be, can be utilized to take the place of some of the parking. I know we're losing 100 spaces. Have we ever gotten the agreement worked with the hotel? I think I asked you that last week. What we're working on is trying to get those, I think, 26 spaces, get those moved to the top of the parking garage. And that would certainly help some, but we haven't had any progress. Would you like to comment on the parking?
Certainly, Mr. Withers would be happy to speak to parking. We obviously have spent a lot of time on parking, as you well know, as a member of the Parking Action Committee. Specifically to Riverfront Park, yes, you're right, it's about 90, 100 spots. Not all of them are marked, of course, but roughly 90 to 100 folks can park there today. We have, with the current plan, which does preserve, as Mr. Kelly alluded to, what is sort of called phase two as near-term parking. Those parking spaces, with the addition of parking spaces to the north of the park, total about 45. And with the improved parking on Safi, which exists today, but it'll be improved with this project and I think encourage more parking more regularly, my number goes up to 55. So a little bit more than half is preserved, at least by my calculation, in the current project. You're right to suggest that the garage is a great alternative. On a daily average weekday, there's about 200 folks parking there. And we have numbers for the past couple of years, again, that's been a fairly stable number. On weekends, the surplus available parking jumps to about 200 available, 100 used. So significant capacity there. We've also started this early summer, a regular Friday night and Saturday night count, a physical count, at both the city's VRE lot and the garage. And on average, those tallies are coming in at about 200 available spots at 6:00 PM Friday and Saturday evening. So in totality, we believe that there's ample parking near-term. We still need to look for long-term solutions on our parking needs. But near-term, we think we can accommodate parkers right across the street. I'd also highlight what is obvious to folks. We've taken other steps, the city has, to build out library parking expansion. I know that's a bit removed, but we've doubled parking at the library, just about four blocks north or so. Obviously, we continue to work with Liberty Place and that arrangement, thanks to council, is 264 spots when constructed, available to the public parking inventory. We also have an arrangement currently with the Vacos folks on Barton Street Lot. Obviously, that's a continued lease that won't be there forever, but it's near-term, provided some great relief. We've just renewed the Princess Anne Building space lease for parking. And a couple of years ago, the city worked on the Charles Street parking. So all of that's not right at the Riverfront, I concede, but we're talking about parking certainly weekly. And we believe we have parking sufficient near-term to meet Riverfront Park needs.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Manager. I know that all of this space is not near the park, but I think a lot of the folks that park down there could park, say, behind Princess Anne and walk to places that they're going to see, they're going to be on Caroline Street or William or what have you. So again, the parking, I must say, has always worried me about that. It worries me, it worried me to the, the point where it worried me is that it might affect some of our merchants on Caroline Street. But I just believe, and we're working, I think there's solutions that we can come up with that will remedy that. So anyway, thank you, thank you very much.
Well, certainly in regard to parking, part of it is signage, part of it's wayfinding, part of it's allowing people, part of it's using what's, what I, I went to JMU to an event, I had the JMU parking app. It told me just exactly which garage, which lot, how many spaces are available. And that's the kind of thing we need to initiate. Today's, today's customer, if you will, or visitor to Fredericksburg wants and needs that kind of thing and we can provide it. And once we get out in front of letting people know where it is, it's going to make a big difference. We know it's there. That's the important thing. We do know that it's there. Counsel Frye.
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. Throw my two cents in on this. First, and I mean, I've seen the comments, Mr. Kelly, I don't know, always seem to, you always throw one thing I did that I want to check on sometimes. I don't know what you were talking about when you said somebody had reached out and we didn't reach back or didn't comment. I don't know that, I mean, I do whatever I can to respond. So yeah, just, you can pull my coat head out one later or something. But, long story short, I just want to give you my scenario on this whole Riverfront Park, I say ordeal. Because it's been going on for a long time and when I came on council, a little over four years ago, it was already going on and parking was an issue. And I want to talk about a few things. There was a, years ago, there was a, we were talking about the, and I'm going to reminisce for a minute, so excuse me. But there was a talk about the Masonic Lodge, that being torn down and how we're going to utilize the whole entire space for the Riverfront Park. And there was a lot going on during that time here at the council meetings about what are we going to do, you know, about tearing that down. So ultimately, we tore that down and we were going to wipe that whole area out. And the park was going to be that big and the parking was going to be eliminated. So, you know, I know things change or whatever the case, but that was the original plan. And when that happened, it's like, okay, you know, I'm not, I'm not nitpicking at the situation, but I, you know, I was saying, like, leave the building there. And then when the building is now gone and now like, okay, we're not going to utilize all that space now. So it's like, you know, I have a little toss-up with that. But the Riverfront, the task force has been working hard the whole time. I want to emphasize on that. But I'm just giving my scenario on it. And it has been going on for a million years and I want to throw a conversation out that I had with a resident one day. And I kind of think like, sometimes people don't think we pay taxes too, because they, you know, everybody wants something. And, you know, a lot of people want this, a lot of people were fighting for this Riverfront Park. And the conversation came up about, you know, the cost and so on and so forth. And I asked the resident, do you want the park? Because you were fighting for the park, like, so like, at what cost do you want the park? And he still wanted the park, you know, so, you know, so the cost, of course, is an issue. I'm going to get off subject real quick and I'm going to bring it right back. Just recently, last week, actually, I'm trying to see what day it is. You'll hear conversations about, well, we hear, I hear it all the time, I don't know what you guys hear, where you didn't fully fund the schools. I know that's a touchy subject. You didn't fully do this. You didn't do this, telling us what we didn't do. And I'm going to share this real quick and you can do your fact-checking and come back and push the button and let us know, or let me know if I'm wrong. But I just recently learned that by us being the Title I school in the city of Fredericksburg, that the feds are supposed to give us 40% of our salary, excuse me, 40% of our budget, if I heard that correctly. And the feds pay 17%. So we had to pick up the slack. So, you know, sometimes when the numbers are thrown out there, that maybe what the council or whatever the case didn't do or what I didn't do or what you guys didn't do, I'm just throwing more information out there about what I just learned. And if I'm wrong, I would love somebody to correct me, because I'll be contacting my congressman soon, myself. But, long story short, when those type of, that's the type of conversations that I get when I go to the grocery store. So, and I'm going to shop in Fredericksburg, so I'm going to have these conversations. But those are the conversations that I get. So I just wanted to touch base on that, so when folks say, well, why are you spending this, why is, whatever the case. Another thing, I'm very, very happy, and I have to say it on public record, that when this plan first came back a years, a couple of years ago, the focal point was a ship mast that was going to be included in the Riverfront Park. And I was totally against that. My point then, and I'm going to say it again, that I'm not going down to hear any jazz music with my family and have a discussion about slavery when I'm trying to have a good time and maybe eat a hot dog and get a cone or something. I'm not going to, I don't want your kids to say, what's that for? What is that? You know, that was my point on the ship mast thing. I'm very, very glad that that ship mast is not a part of this project, period. And there's also some discussions kind of floating about telling, telling the slave story or whatever the case from that location. And I'm going to say publicly, I'm totally against that already for the same point. Like, I'm sorry, you can't, you can't mix my opinion, I'm only one man. You can't mix that type of environment with enjoyment. Or your kids playing and jumping around or whatever the case, or you have visitors coming down. That's something that you should choose to discuss. So I'm just throwing that out there, because that's where we were at a couple of years ago. So I'm just showing the full circle of how far, you know, this project has came. The phase two thing, or what's going to happen on that side now that it's not going to be fully utilized, you know, I would love to see. Parking was an issue. So I'm just giving, like I say, it may sound all out, but I'm big on public record, so I'm just putting it out there. But that's what I see on this project. And I will say that the task force has worked hard and I'm going to touch base on old site parking real quick. And I'm going to say publicly that, to my knowledge, and you can check the minutes and check who was on part of whatever, you know, old site had a seat at the table during the Riverfront Task Force as well. And I've been getting some comments recently about, recently, and I'm saying it on record, about, you know, some issues about parking. And I'm also going to say publicly that I've been meeting with Public Works recently to try to fix some of the issues, you know, that could have been fixed a long time ago. But I've been working with Public Works recently, this is happening right now, to figure out some type of arrangement to where maybe events won't be going on during the same time as church or maybe it will start a little bit after church or whatever the case, just to be a good neighbor. So I want to put that out there, because I get all these crazy comments and want it to be fixed right now. And it's really happening, so I'm just throwing it all on the line right now for all the work that's been done. And with a park, you know, you throw it out there and you don't know what it's going to bring back. And, you know, everybody says, well, it's a good economic boost, it's this, it's that, and a lot of people want it. So I will, I will support the park on all of those merits. And if, I probably got five more, but I think that's enough. And it's in my ward and I hear directly from the folks and, you know, that's where I stand with it and that's my reasoning for it. In the future, early, we were talking about African-American history and all of that. I want to make sure that the council knows, I would love to see, when we go on that journey together, that we spend just as much or more to invest into the African-American history story as well. It's two different scenarios, but I'm just putting it out there just like that. If we can invest in some brand-new dirt imported from somewhere else or whatever the case in a brand-new swing set, then we can invest in what we really need to invest in. And everything is a work in progress. I came on council and I learned about a July 1 budget, you know, year-end budgets, I learned that when I got here. So I'm saying, you got to have stuff on the line and this has been on the line for I don't know how many years. So sorry for the 10-minute spiel, but I owe the public that much. If I'm the man that's sitting here that they're putting a spot to vote on it, then I owe that to the public, so thank you.
Well, thank you. Counsel Frye. Counsel Devine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Frye, for those comments. And I would just like to address a few things that I guess have been brought up tonight, but also have been brought up for the last few decades. So, and this really has been a goal of the city for decades. Mr. Brody, you're the third city manager I've worked with on this project and it goes back further than that. So, so Mr. Kelly, you said, you know, we've been studying this for years and years. Or someone's going to say, you know, oh, now we've got to pull the trigger just because we've been studying it for years and years. And I take issue with that. We have been, we haven't been studying it for years and years, we've been planning and working on it for years and years. And I guess my question is, if not now, when? We are 90% there. We have, you know, worked with a task force, members of the community. It is, it has been a council priority in my 14-plus years on council. And I guess at this point, if we're, you know, I think we're there. And I think we're there for a number of reasons. Some of the issues tonight, parking, you know, we are a downtown area. This is never going to be, we're never going to have enough parking for some people in town. And we've got more than enough parking for other people in town. Parking is always going to be an issue and it's always going to be viewed differently by people. This park, while it is hopefully a park of events as well as just relaxation and beauty, is not meant to be driven to by everybody. And I understand we're removing some parking, but we've also... understand we're removing some parking, but we've also retained some parking. And as Mr. Brody said, we've been working to add parking in other spots around the city. So I think we've addressed parking. As far as the comment about that we're only, you know, we're trying to put everything into this one spot, I, I would disagree with that. Again, years ago, about twelve years ago, we looked at, the council looked at the entire linear park, the task force looked at the entire linear river frontage, and it was a council decision to focus on the downtown area, do that park, design that park, build that park, and then we would work on connectivity along the riverfront. So it was a council decision to focus here, and we're just following through on that. Again, it's been a, and again, I think we've addressed other needs that have been community needs. We have included restrooms, and that is a huge public need downtown. And so that is going to be part of this park as well. I do want to just address three, or three topics that I would equate with the park. And the first one is education. I hear a lot about, we're spending five million on this park, and that could be put towards education. And I, for one, as a teacher, would like to say that not all education occurs within a classroom and occurs within four walls. I am a huge proponent of the importance of play, the connectivity, or the connection to nature. Studies have shown that kids who play outside and play in parks become better analytical thinkers, better problem solvers. And the interaction and cooperation with peers are critical life skills for academic and professional achievement. My personal family motto, and my motto as a teacher, rather than no child left behind, was no child left inside. I encourage my students to get out all, as often as they can. The economic value, that this park was designed with the thought and the concept of it being an economic driver and an investment in our community that would be, that would come back manyfold, that it would spark or spur economic development by attracting more home buyers, by attracting additional businesses. We have seen businesses in the past few years wish to come downtown so that their employees would have a place to walk, take a break from their work. They would have a wonderful city to walk around in. Excuse me, that we looked at this park as being not just an event park, but a park that people can enjoy on an everyday basis. You know, bring your lunch down, buy your lunch downtown, walk it down, sit outside, and meet other people in the community. So it has always been thought that it would be an economic development piece. And you do have to invest in your city in order to get that return. Another piece I want to address was the sense of community and the sense of pride that a well-done downtown park will bring us. It really can be sort of a beacon of change for our community. We, again, parks, downtown parks have been shown to promote social health, generate jobs, and spur economic growth. And, you know, basically, healthy parks equal healthy people. We do have a summer gathering place for people. When we built our pool, that was a former priority for our council. And this, to me, is sort of a, another addition to our community amenities. And, and really, those speak volumes about a community and to a community. So I think that that's, those are things to really focus on. Because the last thing I'd like to say is how timely this is, because October 10th is National Walk to a Park Day. And, you know, we, we do have that nice riverfront area that people can walk to tomorrow, but I think a well-designed, welcoming park in our downtown is only going to be an incredible amenity to our residents, our tourists, and, you know, the, the business folks downtown. So I would encourage my fellow council members to really look at what it can do for the city, and I would encourage you to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Devine. Council Duffy?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to echo, I agree with everything that Mr. Withers, Mr. Frye, and Ms. Devine said so eloquently, better than I can. I just want to add, I think we're talking about some very key amenities that we're putting our arms around here tonight that are really going to help bring the kind of development we want in the city, especially along the I-95 corridor. So I, I full-heartedly support this. And I want to thank the hundreds and hundreds of people who participated in this, helped make it better, disagreed with it along the way, and disagree with it now. We, this is a democracy, we have disagreements. And, and I'm grateful for all of them for participating, and, you know, just giving their suggestions or taking leadership roles. As Ms. Devine pointed out, it's decades of work, and I'm glad to see it come to fruition. Thank you.
Council Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few points. I don't disagree with anything that was just said about what this park can do, sense of community, economic driver, education, everything else like that. Not going to question that. But you can put your water feature, you can put your playgrounds in, you can put your walkways in, and you don't have to put the meadow in, and you've still got a top-of-the-line park where people can actually go up and look out over the river and see it. So this is not an issue of the park, it's the issue of what we're putting into the park and at what cost to the community. That's the issue we're looking at, because we do have to look at other priorities and what we're facing coming down the road. So you can have all this, you can keep most everything you want in here, but putting a meadow in there and losing usable space, having an area that's going to flood constantly, that is going to be a major headache for us from now till the cows come home, is an issue. This is not about the park. Again, I agree with everything that was just said. It's what we're putting in and what we're doing. We had a plan in 1982. We had, I mean, we put it up on paper, we did designs and everything else like that. And thank God they didn't go forward with that one, because that would have been an unmitigated disaster. Trying to put bridges to islands and everything else like that at the time, that was not going to go anywhere either. So I do take a little bit of issue when you just say, well, we've been planning this for a long time, and a lot of people involved. And they have, and they put a lot of time and effort into it. I'm not saying that. I'm just coming at it from a little bit of different perspective, and I'm looking at the bigger picture and saying, you can have the beautiful park you want, economic driver, dot, 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 everything you just said, but there are certain things that are in this park that frankly, really don't need to be there and are going to cause us problems down the road that we're going to take care of, which gets back to, and I think the staff did a very good job in agreeing to go back and looking at the stage, because the stage needed to move. It was not placed in the right place. It was going to basically be a stage that we really couldn't do anything with it, and now it is. It's going to be a little bit more of a cost to do it. But here's the thing. My understanding is, we're saying that's fifteen hundred people are going to be there. Some of you weren't here when we had the great debate of doing downtown events, and how much the downtown merchants went a little bit apoplectic about, there's too much going on down here, because there's too many of these events that are shutting the streets down, and we're losing parking on. We talk about parking, and frankly, to me, at the end of the day, the parking's really, I mean, it's an issue, but it's not the biggest issue. It's just, it's something that we, I mean, when we went down this road, it says, we will not move. In fact, the vice mayor made it in our last retreat, we will not move forward on the park until we do something about addressing the parking. And we just heard about what we consider addressing the parking. And the key term in that discussion from the city manager was, we feel we have a short-term solution for dealing with the parking there. Everything we do is, we're going to get it short-term, we're going to get it done, and then when it blows up in our face later on down the road, we'll deal with it. Because here's the thing, the parking study that everybody refers to, four or five of the parking lots that were considered usable are now off limits. Because why? Because businesses were losing parking, and they couldn't get their employees in, so they shut their parking off and said, this is for my restaurant, this is for my business, and I think we're going to have another one right down there, right across from Riverfront Park, is going to do the same thing, or at least ask us to lease the space. We keep talking about, we want a dynamic downtown, we want it to grow, we want it to build, we want to look at it long-term. We're looking at one hand of a project. What's one of the problems we're trying to do with one hand of it? It's dealing with the parking issue. We want that project. So are we looking at just saying, well, we got enough to take care of things right now, we don't have to worry about it for a few years, we'll deal with down the road later? Well, remember, that parking study also showed the, quote, available spaces downtown in about half of the residential neighborhoods downtown were included as available parking for the downtown. And how many complaints did we get when Sedona opened up from all the neighbors around it, because of what was going on with parking? And again, the VACOS project was telling me that they're going to bring in three top-of-the-line restaurants, along with, when they ever get the space to use for the business portion of it, to say there's going to be 264 spaces available is a little disingenuous. The parking deck downtown is called a boutique parking deck for a reason. And every project we've looked at downtown at this point, everybody looks to, we're going to move our employees there, we're going to move more people from Van Proy's project in there, who's working with to do this, do this, do this, do this. So at the one hand, we're talking about, we want to have more mixed-use development and more opportunities downtown, but when we talk about parking, we're talking short-term. But, you know, I did just wanted to address that, because that was the point that was made in this thing. Again, I don't disagree with anything anybody said beyond, just because we've been planning it, it's a good plan, and therefore it should go forward. I understand a lot of people put a lot of time and effort into it. But ultimately, we have to make the decision, and we have to look at not, and as we do, we have a tendency to look at every project in a fishbowl. This is this project, this is this project. And we start needing to look at it's in its totality. And again, you can have this park, you can have education, you can have economic development, you can have sense of community, and I think you can get all the things you wanted in there. And I do think it's over, there's too much in that small space, but you don't need to spend this amount of money. In fact, when I first went on my short tenure on the task force, I asked the person who came up with this plan, he said, oh, two to three million, I'd give you a great park. And that's what most people are asking. Why are we, why are we limiting the space? Why are we doing this, when it's been pretty much a good used public space to begin with? We need to add some amenities to it. I think we need to open up the river to it. We can put a water feature in it. We can put a walkway in it. But we don't have to do everything else, which also destroys cultural features and everything else in the process, and still have a good park that does everything you guys want it to do. That's where I'm having a problem. Thank you.
Well, it's very easy to say, you can do this, you can do that, you can do the other, but every time you say, every time you do those things, it costs money. So, and it's very easy to sit here and say, well, you know, that... I'm getting a little impatient here. Let me back up a minute. First of all, I don't think council, this council or your staff looks at things in a fishbowl. We've tried very hard to look at things with a long-range vision of what's best for the city and what needs to be done on a long-range basis. We have a plan for the year 2036 with very specific objectives in three-year increments to, to that end. And every board and commission that works for the city, these volunteers, are looking at the whole picture. So I can't accept all of your assumptions, Mr. Kelly, but specifically to the park. There is no city that has not used its riverfront well that hasn't succeeded, partly because of it. We have people coming to us, oh, you should look like Greenville, South Carolina, you should look like this, you should look at that. And invariably, those are people who have used their waterfront well. One of Fredericksburg's greatest disadvantages used to be that you could come to town and not know there was a river here. This, this wonderful river that we have and that we enjoy. Only the kids that went out with their kayaks and their good news, Carrie Devine's family, and my kids, and those of us who were told absolutely not to go there, and of course, went there every day, but basically to splash around. But the truth of the matter is, one of Fredericksburg's greatest deficits over the years has been that it hasn't used its river well. And we have developed our trails, and we have developed through the pathways, a long-range concept of opening up the river, making it possible to be enjoyable, and making it a gathering spot. The greatest advantage of this park is, is as a gathering spot. And it will be, and the events are held there now, but they will be done in, in, in a much better way. It's, it's a huge advantage for the city. And furthermore, it has a huge amount of community support, and it has had for a long time. And it's absolutely correct that an awful lot of people put an awful lot of time into, into planning it. So I, I definitely will support it. I am grateful to the people who have spent as much time and effort as they have, and, and have looked at it from a standpoint of how it fits in to a total concept and a total plan for the city. Council Devine?
Madam Mayor, I want to move, we approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to complete design of the riverfront park, prepare contract documents, advertise the project for construction bids, and present a recommendation for contract award.
Second.
Motion's been made. Seconded, is there any further discussion? Council Frye?
Thank you, Mayor Greenville. I just want to, I just want to add a comment, that's all. With anything we do in this city, I'm gonna sound like the only minority up here tonight, but it's just, that's what it is tonight. That's what it is every night. No disrespect, but it's...
We'll give you that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. But we got to have diversity. And, you know, you know, everybody says a spot where everybody comes to, and whatever the case, and a lot of the diversity has to come with the events that, that happen as well. And I'm going to use a point of reference, just like at the concert series that everybody loves here, hardly no diverse, no, no diversity. So, you know, why build something that, that everybody's not coming to? So I just want to throw that out there on record, because we can't keep missing the mark. And if we have our hands in it, we, we, you know, we have to do it. So, you know, I know a little bit about Brooks and Dunn, Boot Scoop, Boogie, and all of that. Y'all ain't know that, did you? But, but I know that stuff, but I, I mean, it's more music out there, and there's different types of things that, that we got to, we got to explore with each other. So it's almost like we haven't segregated events, if I could say, in a sense. So we got to do better, you know, for the future. So, you know, so if people go to events and you wonder why you don't see people or your neighbors, that's why you don't see them. It's, it's not, a lot of these things are not geared for everybody. So I just wanted to say that. Anything that we put in our, our tax dollars in should unify the community. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Point well taken. Council Duffy?
Well said, Mr. Frye. And I'll, I'll be trying to make the Unity Festival planning meeting tomorrow at 6:30. Thank you.
Very good, very good. Is there any further discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes five to Kelly Graham, voting against.
Thank you very much. Item under item 10C that we just passed is the ordinance of first read for the bond issue. Does anybody have any further questions of Mrs. Jett regarding this matter? This is a first-read item. Council Kelly?
Thank you, ma'am. I just want to point out that I will be voting against the bond issue, not because of all the projects on the list, but I still have concerns about where we're going with Executive Plaza, because once we start down this road, it's going to be a public office space for employees for the rest of its life. And a lot of the plans we've talked about over the years are going to go by the boards as we move forward on that, and also, needless to say, the riverfront park. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion? That's what I thought. Everybody's reaching for the button, and I hadn't heard a motion in a second. Council Duffy?
Move approval on first read, providing for issuance and sale of general obligation bonds of the city of Fredericksburg, Virginia, in an amount not to exceed seventeen million dollars in the form details and payment thereof.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six, one. Kelly voting against.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, I'll call on you for your update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Because of the late hour, I will defer speaking through the city manager's report and just commit it to your attention. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Brody?
The calendar is attached. We are going to go into closed session. Would someone please make the motion?
Before that, if we could just, the calendar talks about the 30th as a tentative meeting. If we could just clarify that...
Yes, thank you.
It is, it, it is a meeting. It's no longer tentative. We are...
It's no longer tentative, we are going to meet, um, in a special meeting on the 30th to discuss the, uh, pending ballpark.
Yes, Madam Mayor, that is, uh, that is our plan at this point. We can take tentative off that meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Council Devine.
Time, uh, what time is that meeting? Seven o'clock, seven-thirty? I forget.
Seven, seven PM.
Seven PM, okay.
October 30th, seven PM, here in chambers.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, and Mayor, just, uh, is this, um, what's the nature of the meeting going to be, and, um, will there be public input, and, um, we talk about that?
Yes, uh, Madam Mayor, we have planned on October 23rd to bring land use matters related to the multi-use stadium that we've been talking about, per the LOI signed in June. So, those matters will be before council for public hearing on October 3rd. The expectation is that all of those matters, uh, you'll defer, uh, taking votes on until October 30th, so that, uh, you'll have an opportunity to, to weigh in on the, the baseball definitive agreement and all the land use entitlement provisions all at the same time at the same meeting.
Right. And the public still has a, a chance to direct-
So, the public hearings will be on the 23rd.
Yeah, so they still have an opportunity to, to tell us their concerns and everything.
At any time, of course, yeah.
Madam Mayor, I'll move, we move into closed session under Code of Virginia 2.2-3711, Section A8, for consultation with the city attorney for legal advice regarding the proposed multipurpose stadium definitive agreement and associated legal instruments.
Should we ask for a vote?
Mayor Greenlaw. Motion passes seven, zero.